Six thirty in the with the planning commission for Thursday, October twenty seventh is now in order.
Chairman Hartsfield. Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Harvey.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Nielsen.
Here.
And then I do want to add, since we are doing a work session, I invited other boards to attend. So the entire Board of Adjustment and the entire City Council were invited to attend this evening, since there's been so many people that have had varying roles and an interest in both the comp plan and then regulations and such. So in the audience, we have from the Chair, the Board of Adjustment, the Chair Lou Ramone, Vice Chair Jim Rumsey, and Kevin O'Neil. And then from City Council, we have Mayor Labarre, Mayor Portem, Kelly Case, and then Councilmember Catherine Nakai. Thank you. Oh, okay. And then from Board of Adjustment, Valerie Lundt is on Zoom.
Please throw me the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight on our agenda, we have a work session to review the code review project and get an update on the progress. Turn it over to staff.
Sure. Why don't you start this evening with something a little bit more fun? And so have a sense of humor and if you take offense to something, I apologize. But there's all kinds of different jokes and conference sessions and things that happen about, you know, the code needs an update when. So a lot of these are serious. There are some that are humorous or meant to be humorous. So one of the ways you know your code needs to be updated is just the age of the document. If it's been at least 10 years since you've done a last wholesale review, there's definitely time to look at this and reevaluate things. Your current ordinance, oh, another one is, nobody know, your current ordinances are older than your oldest planning commission member. And then you run into interpretive issues.
We all had a big question mark come up right there.
You have interpretive issues, you know, when you've got original board members that were part of like the last review or staff people, when you've got that kind of turnover, when people have left, some of that institutional memory goes. So it's very helpful to come back and look at things and how are we looking at this? How is this better worded? So that it is more clear for folks. Another sign is when you have long drawn out Planning Commission or City Council or even Board of Adjustment meetings with circular conversations due to a lack of specific criteria for when you're trying to review a potential use. That that can be a direct result of not having clear standards and what you need to be evaluating. There's oftentimes where you've got confusion at initial application about the level of expected detail and process. So the applicant themselves can have challenges. From a staff perspective, right now, it feels like the process section of our ordinance is more of a scavenger hunt than a how to. And it was actually one of my staff people that identified that.
Could you be a little bit more straightforward? Don't beat around the bush anymore.
Well, I think you guys have all had a lot of these same thoughts when you've looked in this code book. So yeah, it is pretty, pretty straightforward here. We get comments and complaints from applicants about certain requirements, you know, really, you want how many parking spaces or you want what? That's not how the world does things nowadays, you know, so sometimes that can be an issue. That or we have a number of calls from applicants always wanting certain provisions of a code interpreted for them, you know, because it's not clear in terms of how things are written. The Board of Adjustment folks will appreciate this. What you have an increased number of variance requests or sometimes it's the same type of variance that gets requested consistently. That can be indicative of a provision in your code that potentially needs to be modified. An example of that, I believe that that board has heard a lot of requests related to setbacks on corner locks and how those get applied and looked at. So another item is not getting the type of development that is desired. So another way to look at that would be someone can do what and still meet the architectural guidelines? You know, that's a great example of where that might be a disconnect. There are times when state or federal laws have changed. An example of that recently was at the state level, there was legislation around family daycare that we actually dealt with last winter and made that adjustment to our regulations, but that's an example of when we have a law change. Another great one is when today's uses are not mentioned in your ordinance where it's silent. Examples of that would be wind towers and turbines, tiny homes, charging stations for electric vehicles. This one's probably a little raw for everyone, but short term rentals is a great example. And then I wanted to throw this out. Anybody here got a great definition for cryptocurrency mining?
That's a grand use.
Crickets.
I know what it is. Not a residential use.
It takes big electricity to do that. Yeah, yeah, talking three phase into a building for crypto crime cryptocurrency mining.
It's like a manufacturing process.
Yeah, it's more like computer search drilling for Bitcoin.
And run your video graphics cards full out, full tilt, all day long, all night long, as many computers as you can hook up. Letting the
Yeah.
powers that be out there on the network, use your computer to do it and give you cryptocurrency for your service. Yeah, it takes a ton of electricity. It really doesn't pay.
So the reason we're here doing this is we've adopted a new comp plan. So the regulations are our primary tool to implement that plan, and we want to make sure that what's in our code is consistent with what's in the comp plan. We want those things to to balance and support one another. So that would be the reason we really kicked off into all of this. And then my final and personal favorite in terms of you know, the code needs to be updated when the planner's copy of the ordinance has doubled in weight because of all the posted notes. So with that, Jennifer with Logan Simpson was here through our comp plan process. So she's in her group have done a lot of the work around the ordinance. And we will be getting everybody a printed copy for you to review and dive into in depth. Tonight, we really want to do more just an overall orientation of what it is you'll be getting and what you'll be looking at. That kind of thing. So I'm really not expecting a lot tonight. I just wanted to make sure that everyone had a good framework for when you do dive into all of this. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jennifer.
Great. Thank you, Karen. Yeah, do you want to share the? All right. I guess I should.
Should just be able to hit enter.
Okay. So first off, what is the code? And I think most, most folks in the room here know what the code is or what we call the code. It's typically your zoning and subdivision ordinances. And they create the regulatory framework, as Karen said, for the comprehensive plan and the policy guidance within the, within the community. Typically, your zoning or subdivision or land use and development code, they have many different titles. Regulate how to subdivide land. That's the subdivision portion. The zoning and land uses of land that are allowed in particular cases of building placement, height setbacks, so kind of, you know, how that building is placed on the site. The parking landscaping neighborhood character can be a piece of it, even if it's not specifically spelled out. I think the neighborhood character comes, comes out as part of the code. Application procedures and requirements and then standards to evaluate development proposals. Wrong screen. Oh, and you guys can stop me anywhere throughout this presentation and we can have dialogue. So. So why would you update the code? And as Karen just alluded to, there's, there's many different reasons why you would start the process of updating a code, but to align the regulations with the comprehensive plan, ensure the code is user friendly. So in today's world, a lot of the older codes were written in based on kind of a model code that came out in the early seventies. And a lot of codes today still have remnants of that language in them. And they were written by lawyers and no offense to Nina, because she's an amazing lawyer. But sometimes the language was a little hard for the layman to read. So a lot of the newer codes were updating with a little bit more layman's terms, trying to make them more user friendly for applicants, staff and the elected and appointed officials alike. Would like to ensure that the language is clearly defined in uniform. So as, as codes get updated and edited throughout the years, sometimes terminology doesn't carry through, the terminology gets inconsistent throughout the code. And you want to make sure everything is consistent and tidy again. Updating outdated language, similar to what I just spoke about. And then building up clarity in the application process. And as Karen said, when you have applicants come and ask for interpretations all the time, then that probably says that your application procedures aren't super clear. And then just to achieve great development. So you know, as time, as time goes on and things change in a community, the desires of the community change and the development patterns may change as well.
Jennifer, I had that last slide to remove unneeding necessary code requirements.
That's a good one.
Or just this land has evolved.
Right.
We now have things that are no longer applicable.
Exactly.
And also looking at our code, we have a lot of redundancy between development plan, if I don't develop plan, PUD, so on and so forth, without a preliminary plat. Things like that that we could look at that could, we could combine, shorten the process, make it easier and just cut the heck out of stuff we don't need.
Absolutely. That's a great point. Thank you for making that. So our overall process, I left the, a lot of you have probably seen this graphic at the bottom. That was what we had carried through the comprehensive plan process. And I left that in because I just wanted to explain how the code update process kind of aligned with the code or comprehensive plan update process. So. At the beginning of the comprehensive plan process, when we were doing stakeholder engagement and community outreach, we were asking questions that were kind of setting this up for the code update as well, so that we could kind of double team that effort and get as much out of the community with regards to both efforts as possible. We also reviewed the existing code and policy documents throughout that process to kind of get our heads into it. And then provided some recommendations for changes. So on this timeline, you see that the code update was at the very end, but we had it in mind throughout the whole process. And we were listening to all of the conversations within the comp plan and thinking, okay, what, what out of that can really carry over into the code update process? So. And I left this slide in to just to remind everybody of the, the the many people that were involved in the comprehensive plan, that again, that feedback carried through into the code update process as well. So. Twenty seven one-on-one stakeholder interviews at the beginning, that actually they kind of carried over into the middle of the process. We left those open for a while, the quite online questionnaires, the town hall. We had a civics class, we had a booth at the old fashioned Fourth of July celebration, and then the, I can't remember how many hours we decided was it eight hundred plus community or committee hours from those subcommittees? So all of that information really helped kind of frame the, the concepts for the code update. General overview, what we, what we were targeted with or tasked with was actually a pretty minor update to the code. And so part of what Karen and I are working on is what's next. So we, we sat down with staff at the time and said, you know, what is really the primary issue that we need to address here? We came up with reorganizing titles seventeen and eighteen, which are the zoning and subdivision ordinances currently into a single code. So it was easier to use. Restructuring the information into a number of chapters that I'll go over here in a second. And creating a new land use table. So currently, your, your uses are listed in each zone district as permitted or conditional. And we put that all on a big table to help read, help it read a little easier and develop just a few select graphics. So. We weren't tasked with a huge overhaul and update of all of the language, but we did identify a few key points that needed to be updated. The sign code being one of them, we had to bring the sign code into conformance with federal regulations. So. So how that panned out chapter wise? Like I said, titles seventeen and eighteen combined into seven chapters with general provisions, zoning districts, development standards, use standards, all in one chapter subdivisions. The subdivision regulations, I'll go into this in a little more detail in a minute, but they were kind of bifurcated and part of it put in the chapter five and the rest put in chapter six with application procedures. And then a definitions chapter. So we've combed through all of the definitions that were in various locations and comb them or combined them in one chapter. So in the general provisions, not a lot of new language in this section. We established the purpose title and applicability based on language that's existing within chapter seventeen or title seventeen and eighteen currently. We did add a new section to describe compliance with the code and to just another section to describe the relationship with other documents, such as the comprehensive plan. And then a small section at the end, just to describe the transition from prior regulations. Anytime you do a code update, it's nice to have a section to say now, how does this apply to prior regulations? So. Pretty straightforward in that one. Like I said, there's those new sections, but they're very minimal, not, not a lot of change. The zone districts chapter, what we did is we combined all of the information from your current zone districts. We didn't add or delete or change any of the zone districts themselves. We compiled all the information into one section. And then we compiled all the dimensional standards into tables. So all the residential zone districts are in one table and all the commercial and industrial zone districts are in a separate table. And it gives you, this is only a snippet of one of the tables. Your minimum lot size for each zone district, minimum lot frontage, all of your setbacks, lot coverage, all of those different dimensions are in a table now. So you can easily just read down the row and see what your dimensional requirements are. Chapter three is development standards. This is all development standards or development standards that would be applicable to multiple application types. So again, we pulled language throughout the, the existing titles into one consolidated chapter. It includes your light, lighting, fencing, landscaping, those type of regulations. We did add a little bit of language to lighting, a little bit of language to fencing for clarification on both of those. Parking, we added some clarification language. And as I said before, we, we did update the sign code. That's probably one of the biggest updates we did throughout this whole process. And I can explain that in a little more detail. The Reed versus Gilbert, it's a federal case law that basically says you can't have any content based regulation in your sign code. And what that really plays out to is your, your current code talks about political signs and yard signs. And so all of those are considered a content based. So you have to put those all in one category called temporary signs or something to that of that nature. And so we've, we've deleted a whole lot of language and simplified down to temporary signage given a size allotment. So any resident, it typically residential properties are what are dealing with this type of signage, but you know, anything outside of your wall signs, your monument signs, your typical commercial signage, anything outside of that that would be temporary in nature has to stick with a certain size. And I, I know we talked at length about whether to regulate the time period, and I think we decided not to on that one. I'll have to look back in that.
The vote for whomever.
Yes. Yep. So typically what we do is a number, a size and a number of them. And I know we talked at length about whether to, you know, limited to, you know, two or three signs. And I can pull up the code specifically, make you talk a little more about this one if we want to, but. In a lot of communities, we will offer a provision that allows for more science during like an election. But we can't say elections, so you just have to say events. So it's just a little nuanced in the language that we used.
Yeah. What I'm going to add is you're allowed to regulate time, place and manner.
Yes.
But not the language on the sign. So if I want three signs in my front yard that says the king is a fink. You know, the question is, can I have two or three signs or only one under the regulations and what size? Not what it actually says on the sign.
And for how long?
Yeah, that would be under time, place and manner. Yeah. You, you could regulate or limit the time period that something could be out.
Because Jennifer, one of my questions is the, the sign code we have now took over a year and a half to maneuver through when it was passed.
Sure.
And the consideration for content as a, a possible violation of First Amendment was considered, but you're telling us that we still had language in there basically because of political or campaign signage?
Yeah. So you had garage sale signs, which are considered more of a temporary sign. So we had to eliminate the terminology garage sale signs. I'm looking through it here really quick.
So that the definition of temporary is included in your recommendation?
Yep.
And temporary could be garage sale, campaign signs and special events?
Yeah, this now it says all temporary signs located within private property boundaries must be related to an event with a limited duration and must be removed within five days after the conclusion of the event for which the sign pertains. And some of that was built on a lot of the existing language for specific events and then just combined to say for an event rather than stating the political event or the garage sale. So, yeah.
But would that be an issue if someone in their covenants wasn't allowed to have any of that out there?
Covenants always trump the code.
Yeah, right. And it's up to the homeowners association to do the enforcement around that.
Okay.
Because I'm just wondering if that's language we should even worry about.
Is there any state regulation? That was passed, I know they recently passed what our state law legislation on constraining restrictions of covenants. Was there anything in there that was related to temporary sign?
Not to my knowledge.
I didn't see it.
Yeah.
Am I correct then? The idea will create a category called temporary sign, we will have no definition of how long that could be. It does seem anomalous.
Yeah.
Essentially the election.
It's within five days of the event. So, yeah.
If you start a year before the event, then a temporary sign can be a year, can be three hundred and seventy days. I, I just.
I'm reading through it again because it's been a little while since we wrote, read this, wrote this.
So if we start now for the twenty four election.
Right, right.
I just say in general, the idea, we'll say defined by temporary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's definitely something. I mean, we had quite a, quite a bit of discussion even just with Nina and staff and us to try to figure out. And I think that's a great question to bring up that, you know, that might be an item we still need to discuss in this. Like I said, it was probably one of the biggest changes that you'll see in the code current in the, in the current draft. A lot of the other changes are pretty minor in nature and I think fairly straightforward, but this was one that could be a little, that could require a little more discussion. So.
So and then before we go on, we have council member Neil on Zoom. And he was asking, what about a real estate sign, you know, like for a house for sale or rent? And then he was saying, assume the time limit would be adjusted based on the type of sign. So that's, that question's in Valerie has something.
Okay. Real estate signs do fall in that category as well. So, and that's been one of the biggest discussions we have with all of our communities is what, what determines the end of an event on a real estate site? So is it when it's sold? Is it, you know, because a lot of realtors will leave it up, leave the sign up and have the sold or the, you know, contract pending for advertising. And so that might be something we need to look at. And I don't know, Nina actually knows a lot more about sign code than I do. So if we, if we want her to speak up on that, we can.
I was gonna offer, but. Yeah. And then those members, I assume the timeline will be adjusted based on the type of sign. And it sounds like what I'm hearing that we may need a more in-depth work session around this particular topic. So like I said, tonight really is the orientation. So this is helpful to know where we potentially need to spend a lot more time together. And then the Board of Adjustment, Valerie Lundry was asking, aren't temporary political signs governed by state rules?
They are, yeah. Real estate signs are governed by official real estate.
So I'm assuming then that the recommended verbiage is, has taken that into consideration?
Yes.
Well, just out of curiosity, do you also address costumed mascots walking along? The human sign?
Well, we did, we did address that in our last.
Science works.
Yeah, yeah. I think we left that in because it was, I thought I remembered seeing that. We have, flags are still in, I mean, really what, what came out was campaign signs, holiday and seasonal decorations, commemorative signs, information signs, no trespass signs. Development project signs, directional model home signs, model home project signs, directional real estate signs. And then you did have a section that was titled temporary signs and it led into real estate signs from there. So all of those were just combined in because they're a specific type and you, you're not supposed to call out the specific type of signs. So, so all of that language was condensed into one small little section on temporary signs.
Is there a section for safety or warning signs? Beware of dog or something?
So that falls in. We had quite a conversation about that because you have no trespass signs right now, and that's the same kind of thing, be warning, warning of a dog. And that all gets lumped into this. So.
Into temporary signs?
And I think they might just be exempt, honestly, because they're so small. It's a lot to wrap your head around. And so it's like we were saying, I'm happy to come and have a couple of more work sessions specific to signs and bring some more information to the table because I find that, you know, when you, when you write sign cones, right, codes regularly, it's all right here for me. But when you speak about it, it's, it takes a minute to wrap your head around. And honestly, sometimes it takes two or three meetings to kind of talk through the nuances and say, okay, can we do this? No. Yes, we can do this here, you know, and here's some different options. And then I think it starts to kind of gel and we figure out what's right for each community. So.
Well, we have a place that I hate to say it's codified, but provides the guidance for the enforcement people for planning department. So look at the more detailed implementation. Again, when you talk about five days after the event as a side removal criteria. Gives them something to hang their hat on in enforcing it. What are you ready to be talking about? When is that done? And I'm thinking of things like so and so is the captain of the football team or, or things like that.
So I've seen this done a couple of different ways. One is it, when you put a duration like this in here, and this takes a lot of administration. So this is where I'm thinking we might want to revise this a little bit further, but a lot of communities will have you come in and get a sticker like a little, it's like a permit. It's a no fee permit. And then you get a sticker that says this is the date that you received that permit. Put it on the back of the sign and then that gives code enforcement something to come back and say, you know, I really think this sign's been there longer. They look at the sticker and they can figure that out. A lot of communities we work in have elected to not put a timeframe on there because there are a lot of, you know, kind of to this freedom of speech option, you know, right now, a lot of people have Ukrainian signs in their windows to say, you know, support Ukraine. A lot of people have, you know, just free speech signage in their windows of, you know, whether it be political or just your stance on equality or something like that. And, you know, you might want to leave that in your window or in your yard all year. And so a lot of communities have elected to just say a size, two by three is typically the size of six square feet, which is kind of your, your typical political stand signs. And then limit a number and say, you know, during most of the year, you're allowed to have two in every yard of that, you know, size. Which means you, I guess you could go with one of a larger size, but the idea is two of smaller or something. And then I worked in one community that said during a special event, and they couldn't say political event, but during a special event, you can have up to two more because you might have several candidates that you want to represent in your yard. So that's what we've seen a lot of communities go towards instead of the. So that's what we've seen a lot of communities go towards instead of the actual time limit of the five days after which it takes a lot of administration to, to, you know, keep out or keep a watch on that.
But the state does specify the number of days political or campaign signage can be up. Is this, is this recommendation not going to address that?
So this, this kind of is above and beyond that.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Does it include that? Or, or do you have the property owner have to work in two places?
So it, yeah. The zoning, the zoning code, the sign code does not always have to, I don't want to say doesn't have to follow that rule, but it can state its own designation, you know, with, so it could designate a timeframe that aligns with that, or it could, like I said here, you could just not have a timeframe and then the state law would kind of supersede that, I suppose. Yeah.
So who would be enforcing them?
So.
Code enforcement?
It would be code enforcement.
Is that a wise way to spend our money?
Exactly, exactly.
Running around, I told you yesterday to take that sign down.
Right.
You know, yeah.
Yep. And oftentimes we find these types of things are more complaint based where the neighbors like, you know, they've had their political sign up well long, you know, well after the election and I want it to come down. So. But so that'll be something to consider, you know, maybe, maybe we maybe we look at not, not including that five days and just allowing a certain number and a certain size left up your route. So.
One of the things that we did in order to adjust that in the revision of our rules and procedures, it must be suggested not to duplicate a higher level code, but to reference it as we put it in. That just points the reader to that. So if someone is coming in, looking at our critique about that, in this case, we'd be looking at code. There's something that, that tells him or her go up there and maybe hot like the kid or experience. Just, just to make it easy for the person that's trying to understand what the rules are. And to think about that as a possible.
Sure. Yeah. And we reference state statute and federal regulations in our codes all the time. So, yep. Great. Any other questions on that one? Like I said, we can, we can talk about that more once you've seen the language and kind of digest it a little bit more. The use regulations. Chapter four is the use regulations. Again, we consolidated all the existing use regulation language and we actually spent quite a bit of time on this one. Because we had to comb through your existing code to find all the uses that were referenced. And then as Karen stated, there was, there was quite a few uses that are not in your code currently that are current, currently anticipated uses. So we did add a few, a few additional uses. We updated the terminology on a few uses. There was some outdated language that we just modernized. And then in a few cases where we could combine very similar uses, we, we have combined them. Like I said, we spent, we spent a good deal of time really going through that with staff, but didn't, sometimes I think it's good to have your eyes on it as well and say, you know, what about this use? And make sure we have the right permitted and conditional uses in the right zone districts. So for the most part, we kept most of the permitted and conditional uses as they were. And the only ones that we changed were ones that just seemed really out of place. So we did add a new process and we'll talk about that here on, on another slide soon. Permitted conditionally, which is different than a conditional use. So. Anyway, so here's a little snippet of that table that, that resulted from that effort.
One thing I've noticed in our code regarding the, the use table, we might have a use listed under that use table, but it wasn't ever defined. But there was something that was defined.
Right.
It never showed up on the use table or it was provided for somewhere else. So by doing the cross referencing between those things, that, that's going to help quite a bit because that did cause a lot of confusion.
And we also pulled all of use definitions into this chapter right, right under the table. So you read down the table and then you just go further down the chapter for your definition. So you don't have to flip back and forth to.
If I wanted to know what accessory dwelling, you know, was, I can just look on that.
You know, the one thing though, I think we kept all the residential definitions in the, in the definition section because there weren't any specific standards that went along with them. So that might be another thing we need to look at is a, a couple of additional tweaks. Karen and I have been noticing some additional tweaks when you sit on a document for a few months like we have, we're going, no, we look at it again. Let's see what we want to do. So.
You can count that this board won't be too concerned about looking at details or tweaks.
Huh?
Huh?
Is that Larry this?
I was just fooling.
All right. Were there any questions on that one?
No, but council member Neil brought up a point that there's very much a difference between structure type versus use. So I'm just making a note of that for us to, as we go back and look through it, to, to think of it or whatever we're looking at between those, those two lenses. I know other places I've worked at, when we dealt with the non-conforming regulations and how to, non-conformities, how to deal with those. We definitely split that apart between non-conforming buildings versus non-conforming uses. So thank you for that.
All right, we can go to the next slide. So the subdivision section, as I mentioned earlier, we consolidated all the existing language into this chapter. We also moved all the procedural language into chapter six. And we do this a lot to keep all your procedural language in one place. And Larry kind of already alluded to this earlier, thinking about your, you know, minor subdivision versus major subdivision, your preliminary plat versus final plat. So having all of that with your development plan type regulations and procedures is really helpful for the applicant to be able to go to one section and see what type of application procedures they, they need. So that when you take all that procedural language out, your subdivision section is actually rather small. So there's not a whole lot of language left. We didn't make any substantive changes to any of that. I think we might have changed a couple of references or something, but kept most of that the same. Application procedures, and this is the one that we, we think could use even more work. So we developed a table which really helps all types of users come in and say, okay, I'm doing a final plat. So I go to planning commission for review and city council for the decision. And I have public noticing of, you know, X, Y, and Z. So that's at the front end of the chapter. And then later is each application procedure have kind of general procedures at the front, you know, if you have a pre-application meeting, completeness review, review of the application, kind of how the general steps work. And then we go into the specific application types, you know, such as a preliminary plat, what, what does that mean? What is our review criteria, those types of things? And as Karen and I were going through it, we did not make a, previous staff did not request a, a ton of substantive changes to this section. They, they understood that there probably were some changes that needed to be made. So Karen and I have been in conversation about how to update this section a little bit further. So it's been reorganized, but a lot of the substance hasn't changed too much other than adding that new conditionally permitted conditionally application procedure.
Yeah. And permitted conditionally currently shows up in our document, but it is not explained or defined it at all, which is part of the, the challenge. There's the practice in terms of what does that mean? But it's not like it's spelled out for anyone. And then I will say from working with the, the regulations, the past 10 months, that the scavenger hunt comment really was kind of accurate as far as I was concerned. I know at a staff level, we do spend quite a bit of time in those kinds of conversations in terms of, well, where is that written and how many days does this one require versus one of the other ones requires X amount of notice and what do you mean this is buried over here for PUDs, but subdivisions is over here and then you're trying to reconcile those. So that totally builds upon what, what Larry was saying about some of what he's seen in terms of how can this be, be streamlined? So absolutely the, the administration application procedures chapter here, I do think needs further refinement. So what you're getting is, is really kind of that initial blush at consolidating things into one location. But I do so that see those needing to be refined further for clarity. So.
Jen, I noticed in your summary that you talk about lot line vacation. Um, are you suggesting that this is something that be dealt with administratively? Because I recall that there's some aspect of our charter that requires that it go through a procedure of planning commission review and then council, council approval. Are you suggesting that that change? And if, if so, it made me have the next thought, have you bumped these recommendations up against our charter?
Um, yes, we, I believe we did bump them up against the charter. I'm trying to find it in the table just for a quick reference. I don't recall changing the review authority on on, on that. So let me, let me get back to you on that.
And it's not that specific point, but more have your recommendations been reconciled with our charter and potential need for charter changes?
Yes, they, they were reconciled with the charter. And like I said, there, there's, other than when you get the document, you'll see this, there's a couple of sections like the public notice, we made a lot of clarifications and simplifications within and the couple of new application procedures or like, like Karen said, the ones that kind of existed, if it didn't, weren't built out. We didn't really change the process on any of the others because we felt that that was a larger conversation that needed to be had. So. Can't wait.
Luke, this chapter here on application procedures where the variances and appeals appear?
Mm-hmm, yes. And I'll tell you, in most of the communities we work, work in, variances and appeals are two of the big ones that we really look hard at the criteria for approval to make sure that they're stout enough to really, you know, hold up to scrutiny. So those are, those are some that again, we didn't, we didn't address quite yet. So it would be good to have those conversations. All right. All right. And then the last chapter is seven definitions. And as I said, we consolidated all the existing definitions throughout your document. And moved, like I said, most of the use categories are in chapter four now. In their words, not a lot of substantive changes. Again, that's another chapter. We usually wait till we get everything else updated. And then we come through the definitions one more time to make sure we've captured any new terms, updated any existing terms and, and so on. So. I was, I always look at the definitions chapter as kind of a revolving door. It kind of gets looked at often throughout the process. So. And that is, that's it for the presentation. Are there any other items I want to discuss or ask questions about?
Couple, couple of general points.
Sure.
First off.
And, and Norma, for the papers on the, the Zoom and and she was asking that people really kind of speak into their mics. I, I jumping in right now, Lee, because you tend to be very soft spoken. So.
Thank you.
I believe we just discussed with Karen's, Karen's predecessor that title 16 was going to be incorporated in this as well, that there was a conscious decision made to not do that or.
I remember a conversation about this. Can you remind me which title?
Title 16 is mobile homes.
Title 16 did get rolled into this.
Okay, because it doesn't.
You're right. It says 17 and 18, but we did roll mobile homes into this.
Okay. All right. Cause I don't have the substance to know.
Right, right.
Okay. Second one sort of general, general guidance for us to have in working this, I think. This I also, I think we discussed several times in the meetings we have when I asked, what's the scope of this effort? In principle, it's not to change the ordinance here where things come up and doesn't quite fit. And one place says 10 days, one place 15 days, you got to sort of make choices, things like that. But this isn't our opportunity to, for example, if we had short-term rentals are not there, if this was, it presumably has to be handled otherwise, but we would go through, there's got to be ways, we could just leave things undone because nothing, nothing will ever get finished. We have to figure out every usage. There may be issues about wind, wind turbines that we just find too hard and too controversial. And it's not useful for us to try and do that in this, which we're trying to reorganize it. We're not trying to set lots, lots and lots of new policies. So I mean, is so I hope in this process where there's things that are a problem, we can kind of leave them undone. And we can note that they're undone and have a wish list of things. Okay, we can then start separately on that. But neither for us nor for the council to approve this, if they've got a bunch of controversial items too, that you just get bogged down in the fundamental process, which is to get titles 16, 17, and 18 into one place.
Right. And that was exactly our charge was just to reorganize and kind of fix some of the nuances that were low hanging fruit, so to speak. It was identified that parking and the design standards within the code are, are priorities that could be addressed, but they were not addressed as part of this.
That would be the example that maybe, maybe it's, maybe that's too much for us to do all the parking because every, there's every different use could have a different parking concern and we it just gets too hard. I would second Lee's motion there. That, that's very important. I think one of the first things that we need to do once we see the, the package coming to us is look at that and say, oh, that's easy. That's a piece of cake. No problem. This one here, a little bit more controversial, it's going to take a little bit more thought, a little bit more coordination. And this pile over here, don't touch that. Not, not yet, not with this. And we'll have to, we'll see in reality how much of a problem it really is. But, but I mean, I just, I want to go into this with that, with the awareness that maybe if it's, if it looks too hard, maybe it is too hard. Yeah.
Better. It needs a different process to get to consensus. One of the ways I'd like to talk about development codes, other times and places is it's almost like Lego building blocks. And what we're trying to do is make sure we've got a really good structure and starter set. You know, that we can then bring in other, other things like enhanced design guidelines or architectural guidelines or more robust landscaping requirements, since aesthetics are from what I've seen are becoming much more important to this community. So right now, these are what we have in place. They, let's get this restructured. And at another point, if we want to dive into reevaluating our architectural guidelines, that's maybe a, a little bit different process in terms of how do we expand on that? So it better reflects what we really want. So right now, this is the, the structure that makes it easier to plug other things in.
Well, and for that reason, I would accept that this is a consolidation that number one brings us up to date and in compliance with state and federal law and eliminates extraneous information and then also addresses those, those areas that we have conflict like the 10 days versus 15 days. But I would also assume, as Lee has said, we are not in the business of completely changing our code. But when you started to talk about signage, that one made me a little bit nervous because that was a, a quite involved community effort to come up with the sign code that we have now. And I realize that you know, as time goes on, we have, you know, more than stone with chisel signs. We now have electronic signs. But, and maybe we can address that, but to change the, the complexity of, of what the community felt was important 12 years ago, I, this is not that kind of a project. My, my understanding is this is simply to consolidate and eliminate redundancy.
For the most part, yeah. And the sign code was something that needed to come into compliance that temporary signage. So take a look at it when you see it because we didn't change a lot of the other pieces in the same code. So.
Be useful. Or something to kind of put a code on, on what is consolidation, what is updating to conform with and what are things like we gave you some proposals from the board of adjustment that we felt needed to be made and probably would affect maybe across the board.
Lou makes a good point. I'm not sure the format of what you're going to give us, but I would the sort of things and we went to keep a column or keep a footnote on each item. What changed? Is there something that changed or why it changed? There's something else of explanation with this?
Yeah. And I realize this is hard for you guys because you're not seeing this. In your packet that went out in advance of this meeting was a table that definitely identified new things. And then what you're going to get in paper form is truly a redlined version. So, you can see strikeout and things that were added.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Not just to show what are strikeouts and what's been added, but in a high level, why and just those three categories. It was changed because the state regulation changed to improve organization or change because.
Yeah, I think I could put together a memo on some of that. Like that, that the the big, like the sign code, can you explain why, why we made those changes? And what some of the background information on that? We do have a an outline and I don't, I don't, did that go out in the packets? I can't remember.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah. There's a an outline of all the different sections that went into the new sections, which could be helpful if you're looking through it.
Lou, do you have this?
Yeah, yes.
Lou, do you have this package?
Yes, he was sent that.
And I think it just helps when you're reviewing it to say, I can't remember where that provision was before. And then you can look in the table and say, oh, 18.0.06.5 moved to here. And then, you know, kind of helps. Okay, yep. So, that'll help. We'll try to army with with as much information as we can.
I think it also be helpful as we review this and as we have this set up, we have kind of a flow of how the review occurs on us before. We'd be given an opportunity, a fairly large section for each one called remarks. Where we can write something in there when regarding that particular thing. It's just an organization thing. I kind of noticed that with the short term rentals, you know, that it would have been helpful just to add something to and explain the why. Or have we considered this for that? But give us a little room to write some notes for to ourselves.
Okay. Would it be helpful? We, we've been using a program called Conveo where you put the PDF versions of everything. I mean, I think Karen will probably give you guys hard copies if you want them, but.
I can send electronic also.
Yeah, it's it's an electronic review platform that you can make notes in. And I don't know a sunshine law if you, if we'd have to keep your guys' notes private, but at least we could see them on our end and then bring them to you for conversation. I'm not sure how we would have to do that, but.
I'm not sure on that either. Yeah, we'll figure that out.
But if that's something you're interested in, we can try it. You know, we could send out a link and see if you like it. And if you don't, most people love it. But, um, you know, we could, we could give that a try.
Does it have anything to do with computers?
It does. So then you're going to like, one of my favorite changes. So, my my original degree was in landscape architecture. So, I I love plants in the landscape sections. And your current code talks about shrubbery. And I just thought that was, it's gone now. Well, it's gone in this new.
Politically correct.
It's not there. It's an old, old term. So. Just landscape material. So.
So, that's one of the things that's older than our oldest planning.
I get a giggle. I can always tell how old the code is because a lot of the.
And then I'm sorry for timing in of Valerie Lendry with the board of adjustments, asking if she can ask a question live. So, Dave, I don't know if you're able to set that up for us.
I think I just unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my my question is, I said, I I'm obviously a little slow here, but I have, I have a really hard time figuring out from this really top level thing with the chapters. It's like, I mean, like title 18's got 78 sections. So, I I don't know what sections you're referring to in this thing. Am I making sense?
Yeah, all of them. All of title 18 came into this code.
Okay. So, yeah, that's, I mean, that that was the reason my other question was, okay, but I mean, 18 is very involved in lots of tables and all this stuff. And this is like, this feels like, you know, the two mile looking down version of this thing. So, clearly there's more stuff, right?
Yes. This is the executive summary or overview or or orientation. So, when you get this whole packet that's about an inch thick, you'll kind of, you'll, you'll have a, I guess, a basis for when you start to look into it. It's like, what am I looking at? Oh, yeah, they talked about chapter one. They talked about, yeah, so it'll, it'll make more sense.
I realize the board of adjustment is not part of this. This is a planning commission thing. Is it possible for us to get that thing too?
Oh, yeah. No, I was gonna, any, the board of adjustment, city council and planning commission members. Since all of you folks were pretty involved in the process of the comp plan, a number of you have a lot or another, a huge interest in where this goes going forward. And then we will be making sure that this is available on the city's website. So, anybody in the community can see what it is that you all are talking about and reviewing.
All right. Thank you. Like I said, I I I'm a little tired, but I think I was sitting there saying, I can't even follow what the heck. It seems really dumb here. So, all right, thanks.
Do you want to stop sharing the screen? Are you okay?
I'm good. Yeah, unless anyone wants to go back to any slides.
So, other thoughts or comments for us, feedback?
What's the timetable for the next steps?
We did not nail that down because I wasn't entirely sure what the interest of the group would be. Definitely maybe early next week before we're able to do it, but get the paper copies out. I can probably get an electronic version out to everybody in advance of that. But I'm assuming you're going to want paper and to make notes and some of that kind of thing. So, I was planning on on doing that.
Those versions would be helpful.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought. And then I definitely want Jennifer to dive back through that administration section. Since that clearly needs another review before we we really I guess feel more confident in terms of what that that needs to look like. So, you'll have opportunity to kind of watch the sausage get made at a staff level. If you really wanted to look at what, you know, we're sending out now versus that that next layer of of finessing. So, that that's in my mind, something that that really needs to happen.
You mean like tentatively, what the plan is?
Yeah, no, I think we can do that because this conversation this evening was was really quite helpful. I really appreciate you guys talking about, you know, let's get the structure taken care of. And if there's icky things that we're not going to build consensus of, it's a clear plug and play, even though it might not be great now, just leave it alone until another point when it can be dealt with in more detail. So, that's helpful to me in terms of of what, what does this target timeline need to look like?
I think another thing to keep in mind too is about the timeline is next week's going to be November and December. We have holidays. We have a lot of things going on.
Hey, I'm not going anywhere. I'm here every Thursday.
Just saying.
Is that time of year where we all kind of get a little lazy?
I'm assuming our next step is another work session.
I I do think so. Yeah, I, well, we're far from public hearings. That's for sure. So, it really is, you know, yeah, building that consensus and finessing what it is we ultimately want to hear.
So, you're saying we should get hard copies or full copies of the ordinance or proposed changes next week?
Yep.
Sometime and then.
Work session in two weeks.
I guess a work session, yeah, two weeks might be appropriate to review. I'm not sure.
Our next meeting is the 10th. Could we do that work session then? Or do we have cases?
We do not have cases for the 10th. Let's let me touch base with Jennifer on her schedule and then, you know, that additional review.
I have a wisdom placeholder on my calendar. So, we must have been thinking.
Or is there a overall timeframe we're trying to fit into it by, you know, it's February 2nd or December?
I don't.
Year or anything like that. It's just, so just to go through the process.
Keep it moving. Just, I just keep it moving.
So, just looking forward.
I'd love to see what a first draft looks like before I had any comment, how hard it seems like it's going to be.
What level of effort may be involved?
I mean, we should just set around what we think is easy was my room was hard. You know, just our first blush.
Yeah, but in the meantime, establish a work session after we get this draft document. And if we aren't looking at any significant planning commission cases for the 10th of November, that would at least give us some an opportunity, well, almost a little over two weeks to to look at it.
Okay. Yeah, we can plan on a follow up session on November 10th.
And can can we count on being able to pick up hard copies here?
Yes, I do want to get, I I will get the electronic version out since that's the easy, the easy lift. And yeah, the the goal is to get the the papers all printed and and available early next week.
Okay.
Yeah. No, because I I'm I'm with you. I need to like hold it and write on it and and things. So, I I totally understand that for everyone. Yes, mayor.
So, any other comments from what we discussed tonight? I think if we plan on that work session November 10th and get your learn copies next week. Sounds like a good starting point. And then we can project future meetings and activities that may be necessary.
Ken, I had one question before we adjourn. Is Logan Simpson still under contract? Or are you doing this out of the goodness of your heart?
We did in a separate addendum for this additional scope of work.
Okay, good.
Although I do love writing code, so you never know. How many hours to just go to the wayside? Right.
Yeah, I don't think contract includes some mental health, though.
You know, a friend of mine, all of you just kind of look at stuff like this and say, there is a reason why it's called code.
Yeah. And thank you for the other boards, the folks for attending, whether in person or Zoom. It's very helpful to staff to have you participate through these work sessions and along the way. I I I just find it helpful as opposed to having a same meeting three, on three different occasions. So, given how thinly staffed we are, it's it's a huge support to to us to be able to do this collectively. So, thank you.
Very good. It's 7:36. We're being adjourned.